It's six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and virtually. In-person attendance will be limited to BHRSD school committee members, superintendent, and business administrator. No in-person attendance members of the public will be permitted at this time. However, the meeting may be accessed remotely through Zoom and/or Facebook. Agenda items listed to those reasonably anticipated by the chair and all items listed may in fact be discussed. Those items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and will be broadcast. It's also being recorded by our committee reporter, other members of the committee, and members of the audience. Minutes will be transcribed and made public once posted to our website. So I'll start off with a brief statement. I want to just give an explanation of how the meetings are run. Public participation during Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Board meetings has been and always will be a valuable part of our meeting. The laws of the state of Massachusetts only require public comment during public hearings, and at no other times is public comment required to be allowed. This board and administration finds public comment to be invaluable, so we go beyond the minimum requirements. The rules that are used for public comment at any town or school district meeting may vary depending on who's chairing the meeting. I allow more public comment at meetings than some chairs, and that's not a criticism of any other chair, it's just a fact. The chair, this chair will recognize comments from anyone who has a connection to the school district. This includes residents, parents, or students of one of our district's three towns, staff members, and tuition or school choice parents or students. Once recognized, an individual may speak once for up to three minutes per topic at the discretion of the chair. The chair does have the authority to recognize someone for a second time or longer than three minutes. When you are called on to speak at a public meeting, you are required to give your name and address for the record. All oral comments at public meetings should be directed to the chair. Expected that anyone recognized to speak will be respectful, will confine their remarks to the topic being discussed, will not slander or speak negatively about an individual or a group of individuals, and absolutely no harmful remarks will be allowed. Hurtful remarks do not have to be intentional. For example, labeling a class of people can be considered hurtful remarks. If hurtful remarks are made, as expected, the chair will remind the speaker of the rules of this meeting. Please remember, there's a fine line between free speech, which we value in this country, and hurtful speech, which we will not allow. Public comment at a meeting is a privilege that this board takes very seriously. I've always operated under the rule that there can be disagreement without disrespect. It's very helpful to hear opposing points of view. I only ask that speakers choose their words carefully. This goes for administrators, members of the public, and board members. None of us are immune from indiscretions when we speak at a public meeting. Thank you. Move ahead to minutes. We have in our packet minutes of April 1st and April 15th. Do you have a motion?
Second.
And let me just pull up the...
Bacon is probably done.
No, I got it here. That's good to hear.
Save us some bacon, please.
It's breakfast for dinner over here tonight.
Sean, you didn't violate any of my rules. You can talk about breakfast for dinner all you want. Yeah, just... So this will also serve as a vote and a roll call. So Bonnie Bondifoni?
Yes.
Sean Stephen?
Yes.
Polly Thomas?
Yes.
Diane Singer?
She's on, take you soon. I've not seen her, but she could have called in.
We'll move ahead.
Yes. This is Diane.
Thank you, Diane. Bill Fields?
Here.
Rich DeHoney? That was a yes, right?
Registered as a yes and I'm a yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's a unanimous vote on the minutes of April 1st and April 15th. Now the superintendents report.
Okay, so I'm going to do a couple different things. We continue to chug along at school. Today was a great sunny day and kids were out a lot. I'd like to thank Steve Soul and his maintenance group. You'll notice there are many more picnic tables around the schools. They got a very good deal from Car Hardware and assembled those, so that's really good. What I'd like to do, and I just want to make sure that she's been able to log on. Kate, Kate Retschel, are you on the call? Okay, she's not on yet. When she gets on, I'll introduce her. So let me do some other things first, and then I'll go from there. We, in terms of updates on vacancies, we interviewed some assistant principal candidates the other day, and we're very close to making a decision on that. So we'll likely share that news next week. Our district wellness coordinator we selected, the person we selected is Iona Smith. She's well-known to many people in the district, thoughtful, longtime member of our health and wellness team, and we're very excited for her to join us. She comes from, most recently, Railroad Street, and we'll have her at a future meeting. We're also seeing some, late in the year, retirements. I mentioned a couple at our last meeting, and we're working on filling those positions. I think largely we're all staffed up at Muddy Brook and have a little more work to do at the middle and high school. And we're close to being able to shortly announce our new ninth grade team that's going to implement the proposal you all approved last week. So not tonight, but soon. So Kate Retschel is on the call, and I'd like to introduce her. She's our incoming Muddy Brook principal. Kate previously worked in Lee for many years, and before that in Pittsfield in both the public schools there and in some parochial schools. We're really excited to have Kate join us, and for future meeting, we'll have her in person with us. But Kate, welcome to the district. We're really excited. Feel free to just introduce yourself and say a few words. No, she said she's on.
Did she join on like Facebook?
Let me just check. There's one phone number there.
I think that's Diane.
Give me just a sec. Kate, are you able to say something? Okay, she's writing me back. Okay, well, let me, I'll... That's very strange. Kate, there's the possibility you might be on Facebook, and if you are, log out of Facebook and go back to Zoom. We can't hear you. So let me go on to, sorry about that, and let me go on to a couple other things. We continue to do work on our summer programs, and we'll be doing surveys of both staff and families for students going forward. We're going to run our typical special ed program, our project connection programming, some tutoring programming, and in addition to that, some online programming, and we're fine tuning the rest of that. I think at our next meeting, we'll, we can give you an update on who's signed up and what that's going to look like. On a COVID-19 perspective... Sorry, I asked you to...
So that, I mean, what you laid out about a month ago seemed to be like a little broader than what you just listed. Is that, what is the, do we have a set of what we're actually offering? My first question. And second of all, in addition to the federal money, I see that now the governor has $70 million he's handing out for summer programming. I mean, I don't think financing should be any option. If we need to pay for it, we need to, but it also seems like there may be some financing options out there.
No, I think money's not an issue. I think the real issue is student interest and family interest and demand and staff interest and availability. So it's taken us a little longer to pull those surveys together. I think the only other thing I didn't quite make, and then several partnerships, and we're sort of in the process of negotiating all of those, but one, a particular opportunity for students of color to work together on something led by a former graduate tied to community partners, likely some online opportunities for classes through colleges, some SAT or ACT prep over the summer that people can do remotely from wherever they are. So if they're, and asynchronously. So if somebody's daughter is working as a waitress in a restaurant, they can do two, three hours a day or a week on that. So the, we have more things probably than we need to offer or have capacity to staff or even interest, but we need to complete, have people complete those surveys so we can tie up the loose ends on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hard to gate, I understand what you're trying to do, but it's kind of hard to gate survey to get interest when nothing's been offered.
It's a classic chicken or the egg thing.
Yeah.
So you'll see, when you see the survey, there'll be a list of possible things that we express, and then there'll also be an opportunity for people to express an unmet need that we could then create something. When are the surveys going out? I think early, early next week.
And is there any thought, like actual, some academic classwork? Like a class where you're getting credit taught by one of our teachers? Like in our class or English, science?
There's the possibility of doing that. This is sort of the teacher side of the survey. But one of the things that's really struggling is this year's beating the heck out of everybody, and most people are expressing a desire to catch their breath and not teach a more typical class. I think there'll be a small number of people who are willing to do that, and we'll lean on them. And if there's interest from the student family side, we potentially might even reach out to people in other districts that are interested in working for us.
Yeah. It's also where the online component could come into play. There's a way that we can financially support that. I would assume that would expand the options.
Yeah, and we're talking to, we're talking to other people and organizations about that. So, and it's a little premature because I'm negotiating some of it. But there's a, and not negotiating with the teachers, but negotiating with vendors, right? So I think shortly I'll be able to articulate a whole line of online options, super high quality, really interesting part of a national network, and that may be appealing to some people. I also think, and I said this maybe as many as six weeks ago, the, I'm as interested in doing stuff in the fall and spring as part of an after-school program, or even more interested in that than I am necessarily in going really deep this summer. Right, and they don't have to be mutually exclusive. We might be able to do, to do a little of both.
Yeah, seems like government down on the online now. May not be answering the call if what is needed.
I saw on that MAC newsletter thing every day, some districts are doing something, and I'm not sure if some money is not the issue. They're actually offering teachers $50 to $100 a student to be in class, an academic class. They offer an academic class, these are districts, and the incentive is winning because in some of these districts, this is nationwide.
Yeah.
They're getting teachers that admit that they're, this would be very good. They want a little break, but then there's nothing wrong with like in the middle of July through the end of the year or the end of the summer. With a financial, you know, $50 to $100 per student.
Sounds fair to me.
You get 10 students, and that teacher makes that money, and he gets it with the district's blessing, and they do all sorts of courses, both academic and recreational. I don't know if that's, if money's not an issue. I don't know if the COVID money or the state money would be available, but I think it's a perfect opportunity for our district to maybe look at some sort of, and I know this is probably mixed up with negotiations, but I'm not sure.
No, no.
Could there be a bonus? If you are coming in, and we're going to start a program two weeks after July 4th, whatever that is, and say, we will give teachers, if they're willing to do this, $50 to $100 per student. I'm just throwing that out, but it certainly would be an incentive.
There should be a dramatic, there should be significant compensation for teachers who are willing to make that sacrifice. It also seems to me to be an opportunity, particularly at the high school, but even at the middle school, we're so constrained by the schedule. There's a lot of classes that people would like to offer, teachers would like to teach, that, you know, that's a real high nuanced humanities, English type of social studies class, or focusing on a certain part of literature or something that definitely could be, I don't worry about the credit, but just like, it would be interesting to the kids and the teachers. It'd be a real opportunity for professional expansion for our teaching.
Well, the other needs that we heard, I think we've all heard, sort of, parents would feel that their children have fallen behind. So it's not just the high end. I still think that there is a need for some one-on-one and tutoring and, you know, small class instruction to, for people to catch up if they've fallen behind.
Let me come back to you with some additional ideas and feedback on this. I mean, one really interesting thing is, is summer provides us the opportunity to play around with time, right? So a typical class over the course of a semester translates into 54 hours, right? Which is sort of an artificial old-fashioned construct. But places at the college level, like Colorado College, do one class at a time instead of seven, five days a week. So potentially, somebody could do, go really deep for two or three weeks into something, and it could be credit bearing. It could also be really engaging, right? So, and then, and then somebody's time commitment might be three really intensive weeks, but you can walk away from that, right? Like, you can survive it. It might even be inspiring. What I don't want to do is, in a year when people got beat up and very exhausted, have them keep plowing through the summer and then around November just collapse, right? Because many people are doing really good work, and some people are also doing really good work but just hanging on. So I'll come back to you with a range of options there. I noticed since, since we started talking about that, that Kate has been able to join us. So Kate, do you want to unmute yourself and just say a few things? We're very excited to welcome you to the district starting on July 1st.
Thanks, Peter. Hi, everyone. I'm sure I'll get to know your names and faces after a while. I'm really excited. After 11 years in Lee, I've got some experience and looking to put that to work with a new situation and some new kiddos. So, you know, not much to add. Some of my strengths, I think, are in the social emotional realm for kids. Also, data and RTI for kids, just to name probably the top two. And hopefully we'll secure an awesome assistant principal soon and be able to move Muddy Brook forward in ways that we all want it to go.
Great, thanks, Kate. Welcome aboard. We're all, we're all very much looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Good, so the next thing is COVID-19 and where we are on that. So obviously, almost everybody's in school, or everybody wants to be in school is in school now, five days a week. And I think that's gone really well. The COVID-19 numbers in Berkshire County continue to get better, and I'm excited about that. We look at the data religiously a couple times a day. We've continued with pool testing, I think, across the schools now. We've had, maybe done more than 1,500 pool tests, and every single one has come back negative. So I'm really happy about that. The data within the broader communities is pretty good. I think we're averaging, in Great Barrington, which is our biggest town, something like eight positive cases a week. Stockbridge and West Stockbridge significantly less. Our neighboring communities are in pretty good shape. Otis and Sandusfield had a little bump, but that's getting better. So I think that's good. People are following the protocols. We anticipate, and a lot of 16, 17, and eight-year-olds are now getting vaccinated. We anticipate that the 12 to 15-year-olds will get, or the CDC will give Pfizer the clearance to release their vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds. And we'll continue to offer our clinics at the DuBois Middle School, and hopefully we can get most of our, or all of our 12 to 15-year-olds vaccinated, perhaps as early as next week. And I think they just recently asked for approval, and we think that approval's going to come like maybe Monday. I think they just recently asked for approval for two to 14-year-olds, and there's the possibility that might happen before the start of school or around the start of school. People are largely following protocols and doing well. The, as we're doing better as a country on this, the messaging around some of this is getting more confusing. And it used to be you just wore a mask all the time, and now you don't have to wear a mask outside in certain circumstances and contexts. But the school and district are taking a conservative approach to this that might be more conservative than some of the general guidance, and we're happy about that because it protects our students and staff. Any questions on that? That's sort of a mouthful. I don't see any answers. Okay.
Not for this meeting, but I would like to see in the next month or two, or next two meetings, the plan for next year, as far as, you know, what we're planning, as far as returning, and as far as vaccinations or staffing. You know, basically, you know, what to expect if the numbers continue to trend as they are, what we're expecting to...
Yeah, 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 no, and I'm happy to stop for a second about it. The, we're anticipating that next year's going to be a pretty close to typical or normal year, particularly as more and more people get vaccinated. The biggest shift in the elementary school is that we're going to move forward with this model for more slightly smaller classes that Tim had proposed. And we'll see how the guidance changes around singing, musical instruments, lunch, and some of the indoor phys ed stuff. But I think we're on the other side of this. Things are getting, things are getting better. So in my mind, I'm planning for a regular opening at a regular time and being in school five days a week going forward, which will be really, really appreciated.
Will high school go back to a full day of classes every day of the week? I know the early release is something...
Yeah, yeah, so I'll talk about the early release, yeah, but that's the, that's the plan.
They're going to go back to eight periods?
We, the plan is, and Christie can talk to us later if we need to in more detail, but the high school's going to go back to an eight-period schedule. This year, we did a seven-period schedule for next year. But I'm hopeful, like that's a really, to have a more typical or more normal year should be a good thing. I think that, that's from a structural perspective, right? But in terms of the day-to-day work, a much bigger emphasis on social emotional learning, relationships, advisory, supporting kids. And then the other piece of it, which is the accelerator to the recovery learning, depending on your worldview and perspective.
Peter, I don't know if you can answer this, but it just came as you were talking to my mind. Other districts are making similar plans so that we, we have, for example, in athletics, we have athletic sports that would be operating as normal in the fall. So you would have soccer, you would have, they had cross-country because that was safe. But soccer, football, volleyball, you'd have these. Do our other districts saying anything about what they plan?
Yeah, I think, and I can check in with Carl on this and also the folks at the MIAA, but I, my hope and expectation is that we're able to run all sports in the fall. We'll have another discussion about winter sports. The two that were the most complicated that we didn't do this year were wrestling and swimming. A great study came out in England about swimming, that the chlorine in the pool water takes care of coronavirus in 30 seconds. So our reason to not do swimming wasn't because we thought it wasn't safe. It was because the facilities that we rent didn't let us do it there, right? But they did let the youth swimming program and the master swimming program happen. So, and to my knowledge, they had a handful of cases, and they managed it similarly to how we do, where they contact traced and shut it down for a few days and work through it. But largely with that incident, and I don't think, I think somebody came into the facility positive, but I don't think there's any evidence that then everybody transmitted the virus within the facility. Yeah, so I think we're, I think we're in good, I think we're in good shape, and most of our athletic programs are high school kids, and presumably they'll all be vaccinated. And I know we co-op for crew with Lennox, and they made a requirement that our students participate in pool testing. And I may come back to you all, and maybe all our interscholastic athletes should be required to participate in pool testing. Maybe, I don't know, right? We could think about it.
There was a push at some point in the year, this year, that I think got abandoned, on requiring flu shots. Will there be a similar initiative for the COVID vaccine?
Well, the, I don't know. As best as I understand it, the complexity about the COVID vaccine is it's, it's an emergency use declaration. So it's hard to compel people to do something that's emergency use.
And it'll be interesting to see where they go back with the flu shots even, because they kind of ended that rather abruptly. So it'll be interesting to see what they do with the flu shots, and if they want to end up in court with an EUA that's mandatory.
That's state, that's how it's...
Right, the flu shot thing was frustrating because we worked really hard, because that was an early, the thinking was if you had a flu shot, it protected you, not against COVID, but it just is a good thing. And I think upwards of 90% of our people complied and got a flu shot. And then at the last minute, somebody at the state said, oh, you don't need to do that.
Hopefully you're still off that one. So will they need flu shots back here? Yeah.
Yeah. But will they make it mandatory or not, the state? Who knows? Okay, so, but, but I'm, I'm hoping for a fairly normal year from a structure and a schedule perspective, and a very sort of different kind of year from valuing relationships, social emotional learning, creating safety nets for kids, and, and making sure really everyone, or, or in the worst-case situation, as many people as possible can be, be successful. So the, the next thing on my list is this accounts payable technician job description. Let me just have that in front of me. So the accounts payable technician is a position in, in the district office, where somebody does a lot around paying vendors for things. So you have a job description in front of you, or, or you saw it in the packet. Previously, this position had been part of the cooperative contract. Steve and I met with Paul Gibbons, who represents that group, and we requested that the position come out of that contract and be part of the independent one. He was fine with that. There were a small number of people that work in this office that, that are seen as doing, it's funny language, but confidential work, so they're not part of a bargaining group. So this is, this is one of those positions. You'll see red line edits in this. So it used to be that a qualification was a high school diploma or equivalent. We've raised the bar slightly for post-secondary training in accounting business or related field. It's a twelve-month position, it was before, but now part of the independent group. Confidential information in appropriate manner. Most of the rest is the same. We took, uh, issue manual checks as approved and make appropriate journal entries. We, we don't do that anymore. We just issue electronic checks, right? So that, we don't need that. And then there are four new things that we've added in red on the third page. Support the business administrator with state reporting requirements, including unemployment, payment processing, and other reporting as necessary. Support the director of operations with district grounds and facility rental requests, and use software systems as implemented. So Steve gets hundreds, maybe thousands of requests a year, maybe just from the Golden Knights, right? If you count up all the practices they have, not, not to mention all the other groups. So, so taking the, the detail of this off of his plate, so he can use his time and energy on other significantly more complex things. Back up the business administrator and the management of online personnel system, Eye Visions. So we're, again, we're doing more and more stuff electronically, and if Sharon were to get sick, or, or be out for an extended period of time, it's good to have somebody else who can do that. And, and the last one is analyzes financial data accounts and trends related to accounts payable to inform planning and future decisions. So my thinking there is that the person that's processing all this has a particular insight into what kind of payments we're making, and where, and how much. And she can easily take those hunches and insights and work in Excel documents and our other systems to analyze payments and, and help us see if we can realize some efficiencies. So I think this is fairly straightforward. I would love somebody to make a motion to approve the changes.
Motion to approve the changes.
I have a motion to approve the changes, and I have a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Two of the books. So our intero-, inter-office mail and distribute, and then maintain main office copier machine, stand between the orders, supplies, and services needed, is that still?
Yeah, it is. So the, the folks in the office take turns getting the mail and sorting it. It's sort of, unless it's raining, it's sort of a nice job. You walk over to the post office and grab the mail, and then you come back and, and sort it. And occasionally, I even do it. So that's, continues to be part of the job. The, the second one, the copier, well, any of us could, could work on it. It's nice to have a designated person. And then we just call our vendor, McFarland, if, if something's wrong. Any other questions?
In the audit that we had, was this a suggestion? I didn't, to be truthful, I didn't really read all the pages of the audit. Was this suggested in the audit? Or was it suggested that this would, in some way, this position would help with what Sharon has to do?
No, wait. So, so to be clear, Kathy Burquard was in the position for many, many years. At, at her retirement, we used this as an opportunity to, to expand on, on the role. Kathy did a very good job, and, and the, the audit was actually, like, perfect. Doesn't get better than it was. But this is just us being a dynamic learning organization and evolving our approaches and, and, and practices. So there, there's nothing bad that we're reacting to. This is us being proactive and, and trying to get ahead of things and do even better.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Ann?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bonnie? Bonnie, are you still on? We'll come back to you. Molly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane? That's Dan. Breathing, but I didn't hear an aye. Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And I. Do you want to go back to Molly? I am going back to Bonnie. Bonnie?
I will vote my proponent Bonnie and say yes.
Well, it's, it's not a very close vote, so I think we're fine.
I think the motion is carried.
Yes. So the motion's carried, nine to zero, and Bonnie will get you on as soon as we can. So Peter, let's move.
Aye.
Perfect, Bill. Great. Now it's ten to zero.
So the, the next thing I'm, I'm gonna, the, the next thing I'm gonna talk about is this proposed early release plan, or, or early dismissal plan. And, and I share this knowing this is a relatively big ask, and I'm gonna try to make an argument that, that convinces you that it's a good investment in time, and that also that we have plans in, in existence or in development that will address the, the potential shortcomings of this, right? So many, many people, many researchers think teacher time and time to collaborate in teacher professional development is the single greatest lever for school reform, right? And I could quote dozens and hundreds of people around this. And interestingly, and I was just looking at it the other day, eighteen years ago, I wrote my dissertation around the value of teacher collaboration and, and the impact of it on their teaching and their perceptions of teaching, and, and most specifically on, on students and their growth and achievement. So huge research base that says carving out some time for teachers to work together is, is important. Historically, as a district, we've used seven half-days and four whole-days to support ongoing professional development, and then faculty meetings every other week for much of the year to deal with, with some professional development, but also just some community building administrative stuff that needs to happen. What I'm proposing in simplest terms, and I'll go through the math on this a little bit, is that for a year, we pilot an early release at the middle and high school at one o'clock, and at the elementary school at one forty-five. And, and then the teachers have uninterrupted time after that to, to work very specifically on instruction, curriculum, and assessment, and, and very specifically on case management or addressing particular needs of students, right? So if we were a ninth-grade team, or a tenth-grade team, or a group of math teachers, we'd meet and talk about why Jason's such a rock star with his homework and his assessments and all the other things, and, and what we need to do. I'm not gonna pick on Rich, but I'll pick on Bill, and, and what we need to do to, to support Bill being the best Bill he could be. So, so I, I think that's really important. What, what's come up in sort of people reading this and thinking about it is, a, a week ago, we, or two weeks ago, you all approved this great plan around equity and access for all. And are we creating a structural problem where some folks with more resources have more capacity to get their kids at one o'clock and get them out of school on these Wednesdays, and other people are working two jobs, or they don't have a car, and, and they don't have it? So my answer to that is, I, I'd like to think no. And, and while I want to free up the teacher's time from one o'clock or one forty-five, I believe we can, from a parent perspective, use other folks to keep kids engaged, doing interesting, high-quality things until the end of what would be a, a more typical day. So Project Connection, community partners, I'm already in conversation. Something like a hundred of our students participate in the butternut ski program. It, it looks like they can offer this earlier on Wednesday, so for kids who do that, they can do that. But if kids want to stay with us in our own building, doing something high-quality that's interesting, they can do that. If kids want to go home, they can do that. If older students want to use part of Wednesday afternoon to participate in internships, and they don't have a corresponding after-school activity, or like athletics, or drama, or something, they could do that. If, if they do, then they could, if they wanted, go home and come back, or they could stay in school and, and be engaged in, in high-quality stuff. Our plan for this is not to do, typical school year has forty weeks in the year, and the plan is to do the early release, and this is a little confusing, and we'd have to be very careful about messaging this, but only in the weeks that are full weeks. So that ends up being about thirty of the forty weeks. So i- if the, the week is in November, and it's Veterans Day, and we have that Tuesday off, then we would not do an early dismissal on that Wednesday, right? Obviously, Thanksgiving, we were already going early on Wednesday, so we wouldn't do it on that day. The election day, we, we would not do it. The Martin Luther King Day, we, we would not do it, so on and so forth. And, and there'd be a little messaging there, but, but that would be the approach. The, the math around this, I shared, I, and I'll get to you in a second. Normally, we use four days for professional development, two before school, one on election day, and one in March. I would give up, in exchange for this, the March Professional Development Day in its entirety, which, which in and of itself covers like four of the early dismissals, and I would give up the seven half-days. So my total ask is, is a little more than, than ten or, or twelve hours. And I could get more granular than I did in this proposal and really go to the minute, but, but I, I didn't do that because I think this represents it all. Okay?
Ann?
Ann, yeah, go ahead.
Well, the buses run at the same time every day?
So here's, here's what our intention is. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the, the buses run like they do now, right? So they leave the high school and middle school right around two forty-five, and the elementary school three fifteen, three thirty. On, on Wednesdays, there'll be buses leaving the high school and middle school at one, and the elementary school at one forty-five. And then there'll be the option for another bus leaving at two forty-five, or, or the three fifteen. And then the Project Connection buses go at five PM.
Will those, the, the two, the buses all be the same routes? It's gonna be a mirror of the other days, or it gonna be, are they gonna be longer routes, which is gonna be on the bus mark, or longer? Are they gonna be different routes for the, like, let's say the high school, the one versus the two forty-five?
Yeah, so I, I'm guessing the one and the one forty-five buses will be the same.
One and two forty-five.
He's saying that it isn't gonna be.
No, no, let me get, let me get back to that. All right. So I'm, I'm talking now the high school and the middle school at one, and the elementary school at one forty-five. Those buses will be exactly the same as they are in the, the normal routes. The two forty-five and three fifteen buses will likely have many, many fewer students than the normal bus at the end of a typical day, right? So there's the possibility that on those runs, rather than, normally we run, I think it's thirteen buses at a time, right? At two forty-five and three fifteen, I don't think we're gonna have the demand to run all thirteen buses. The Project Connection buses, we just run three, right? I'm thinking at two forty-five and three fifteen, and we won't know this till we sort of get people to sign up and make sense of it. We'll probably run something in the range of six buses. If we run six buses instead of thirteen, there's the possibility the routes will be slightly longer, but it really depends on sort of where people fall along the routes and who decides what to do.
Have we had the chance to do a cost analysis on what this is gonna cost us with busing?
Yeah, I mean, it, 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 it's not, it's not huge money, right? And, and again, like the, it, it's a, it's running potentially six more buses for thirty days, and a little less than, and I'll confirm this, but four hundred, four hundred dollars.
Other questions?
So do you think that there'd be enough interesting stuff offered at the school if a lot of kids would stay?
I do.
I think for a lot of parents, it's rough, then, those kids coming home, you know, an hour or two earlier than coming home.
Yeah, I mean, so our, our plan is to look at what we're offering in Project Connection and expand it, work with our community partners, and expand it. Often in Project Connection, we have huge waitlists of kids who want to get into things that they're not able to get into. I, I think.
In some ways, this pushes us to come up with richer options that benefit more families as opposed to the current situation where, where parents and families have to scramble to find coverage on those full-day P Ds and half-days anyway.
Right.
There is nothing.
So, I mean, what, on the, on the current seven half-days, which I think all fall on Fridays, kids go home at eleven thirty.
And there's nothing.
And there's nothing, right? So, so what I'm proposing is, if, if a kid wanted to go home, they go home at either one or one forty-five, but if they wanted to stay, and I hope they do, because I think we'll do neat things, then they can have a, a, a regular day or dismissal. And if they hadn't previously participated in Project Connection, they could stay. they could stay straight till five on Wednesdays, right? So potentially, there's a real value added here.
Is Project Connection open to anybody now to still?
No, and I I have to be careful and clarify this. So so Project Connection is, it's sort of like the issue with with Band-Aids or like skin plasters, what do you call things, like fabric adhesive bandages? Project Connection is the name for our federally funded Twenty-First Century After-School slash Extended-Day Program. And that's meant to target kids who are academically and/or academically needy, right? Or seen as high-risk. We've not, except for the very beginning of our time with Project Connection, we've not been able to include our whole population in it because the funding is targeted. Under a broader umbrella of our extended day and after-school programs, we've run other things that often get incorrectly called Project Connection or Band-Aids, right? But but it's not that, it's just, it's just a part of our extended day program. So this, this has been a goal of ours for a long time, which is to open up our extended day program anyway. So these sort of, the carving out some time for teachers and staff to do some thoughtful work and creating additional opportunities for a wider range of students are are converging in this plan.
So if it happens, will there be more options in extended day programs?
Certainly on Wednesdays and and maybe on other days. I mean, and part of what Rich was pushing me on is what are you going to do around recovery learning or accelerated learning?
I've never said that.
You have?
No, I have, I've never used those words in my life.
Okay. What what are you going to do to to make up for the challenges of COVID, right?
Yes.
Okay. And and I I think one of the opportunities is to do that on Wednesdays, but also on other days after school, right? And if I thought it was a good thing for for students, I would do it earlier in the day. But all the research says, like, we should probably start later anyway. So I don't want to run like a seven A M. S A T. class because it's not going to turn out well.
And can all kids get bused at five o'clock? Are there going to be late buses, like there was once upon a time?
Well, that's the plan, is to is to have late buses. Now, this is all tied to interest and and capacity.
And also, will that funding come from this COVID new funding?
Yeah, potentially, right? But 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 also, I don't know, probably half the high school kids drive themselves.
Right, the other half don't.
Right, so so, yeah, but we're running now.
And we need to get fewer of the kids driving by the way.
Yeah, tell me about it, right? We'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. We we're running buses at five o'clock now, three or four, I can't totally remember. And and they're nowhere near, pre-COVID, they weren't at capacity. Even during COVID, they're fewer people riding the buses.
Are there some late buses now? Could my high school kid ride a late bus at five o'clock?
No.
I I think.
No.
Yeah, but I think that the elementary. We have with our busking system right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's a whole, that's a whole nother.
We could do, we could do an eight-hour meeting on the absence of late buses and the impacts.
I worry about, I just would need to go forward with a plan that's assuming there's going to be a busing system that's going to work and serve everybody. And this is not the kind of thing like you're locking in in September and then that's your plan for Wednesday until June. Like, it's going to be a fluid thing. And if we don't have a partner that's willing to work on fluctuations in in quantity of students and where they're going and when they're going and things like that, it will become very complicated very quickly.
Yeah, so my my challenge is to propose a plan to perhaps get your support. And then fine-tune the additional details and then come back to you with it. I I wouldn't propose this if I didn't think we could do it. I don't know the answer to every small question. Before COVID, we ran three or four late buses tied to our extended day program. And those buses were were often not full. There is.
I make a motion to table this proposal until it's complete and the administration come back with written guarantees on all the representations and allow them to complete all the thought that's clearly hasn't been gone into it. Motion to table is the first meeting in May, or first meeting in June, I mean.
The the only thing before you all vote on that, the. Yeah, no, I mean, do do that if that's what you want to do, do it. I think it it makes it significantly harder for me to move forward on planning. What what I may end up then doing is sharing a draft calendar with seven half-days and four professional development days and then asking you to change that. I think that creates a undue burden on on families, but but if that's, if that's how you'd like it.
Well, we have first personal motion table and I have to table under.
It's not, it's not, right, there's no. So let me see if I have a second, it hasn't been seconded. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. There is no discussion under a motion to table. So we will do a roll call vote. And I will roll and we'll start with Anne.
No.
Jason. Sean.
No.
Is that a no, Sean, I'm sorry?
Yes. Yes, it's a no.
Very perfect. Bonnie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, two, four. Check me if I'm correct on this. And so it's a motion to table this until the first meeting in June. So there is no more discussion on this until, Lee, till we come into June. Move ahead.
Do we have another meeting in May?
We do have another meeting in May.
So was the motion table till June or could the motion be till the next meeting in the next meeting?
Motion that was proposed, seconded and voted favorably was for the first meeting in June. And at the first meeting in January, we approved a calendar for next this, next year, so we have, we have a calendar set right now.
That calendar doesn't have, I don't believe, half-days or or professional development days in it.
And we can talk, there is a meeting.
The matter's table, so.
There is a meeting May twentieth, it's listed right now as a subcommittee meeting. So the discussion will be between Peter and I whether we have a meeting and it won't be a subcommittee meeting because we're still meeting mostly virtually. And so we'll, we'll talk about that then. Okay, let's.
I'd like to see this come back before the committee a little bit more hashed out.
But that's what the motion was.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're agreeing. No, we're not going to talk about it.
Not at all.
June.
June thirty.
Yeah, that was, that was a motion.
Can I ask a question or clarify a question? I'm trying not to engage in debate. If I came back with a fully articulated proposal for the May meeting, would you react or respond to it? Or are you, is the goal of the motion for me to not do that until the June meeting?
Well, by the way, this is a topic I was going to discuss at the subcommittee or whatever meeting at next time is, is, and I want to debate some of it. We need written proposals that are major shifts far in advance of the package. Just complying with the minimum regulatory rules for disclosure is fine, but we probably wouldn't, we wouldn't have just voted on the motion now if if this proposal had come far earlier with far more details. So I wish the administration would 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 fill our inboxes with written proposals and backups for things at any time, particularly this magnitude. So if you want to send any, on any proposal anytime, from my perspective, it's always welcome. But but we'll be discussing and voting on this in early June.
That is what the motion was, so we don't have. Yeah, I mean, we could change our minds, but right now, that's what the motion was, and I have to stick to that, to what the motion was, whether I agree or not.
Yeah.
So moving ahead.
I think it's an opportunity, just quickly, I think it's an opportunity, we just went through a process where I think the community did not feel that they had time to process and engage and weigh in. And this is a perfect, I think, example of a place where we could seek out a little more input. This will obviously have an impact on the families, and I would like to hear from them, I'd like to hear from teachers. And and I actually think it's a good idea, but I just, I want to hear more.
Okay. Additional firm feedback?
I I put it on the agenda because folks have.
Is there anyone in the audience?
Right.
Who would like to speak about two, meeting two weeks ago and to have more feedback on the new plan at Onument? Just raise your hand, or if you are unable to raise your hand for whatever reason, just speak and I will recognize you. And I'm not seeing anyone, so let's move on. The multi-function school activity bus. Yeah, so we we bought two vans, we're excited about those vans. There's one question in this that's highlighted in orange that I wanted to bring it to the school, in yellow, I'm sorry, on page four, that I'd like your collective feedback on. We have a choice between a van or the multi-function school activity bus, right? It's a van, is small enough so somebody could drive it with the driver's license that we all hold, or we could require people to hold a seven-D license, which is slightly more complex and and you need to pass an additional test and do things. My recommendation would be that that we let people drive, we let our own people drive it with just a regular license, but I wanted to ask the committee for their feedback on it. This is a, like a procedural document, and that's why it didn't go to policy. And actually, I think Sharon did a nice, a very nice job putting it together. But that was one question that I'd like the committee to weigh in on. Right, and and people who might use this could be athletic coaches, activity groups, small athletic teams like the golf team, the quiz team.
People going on internships?
Internships.
Right, this isn't new to us, we've done this in the past, we just ran out of whatever, we call them vans.
We we ran our, we ran our vans into the ground. This year, we purchased two new vans. We used the opportunity with the new vans to to fine-tune and and refine our procedures. And like, I'm sorry that the audience don't have this in front of them, but it's like when you rent a car, there's the exterior damage chart with little pictures of the car and you could circle where you ding the fender or whatever you did, right? It's really thorough, really good document.
It is.
The the feedback I want is, are we okay with a a regular driver's license? Or do we want to hold people to the higher standard and get the seven-D license?
Motion that we allow people with a regular driver's license to drive the small vans around wherever they need to go.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So discussion.
Who's, who can drive it?
Yeah, who's in? Who's in charge, who's going to be in charge?
I'm going to be honest with you, your question is, I didn't read this closely, I gotta admit, before the meeting. I assumed we were just, it was just about employees and what kind of license they had to have. I didn't, wasn't contemplating that others could drive it. I'm in favor of that, but that was, that was, right now, that was news to me.
My motion was assuming that there was going to be school district employees.
And and that's, that's my assumption too.
But it could also be coaches or advisors.
They're all school district employees. And my question just really is, it's high school mainly. Is it the principals who's in charge of the signup of this van or is it the athletic director? Sharon, could you just talk to it a little bit, because.
It's, it's, the, the athletic co-curricular director is in charge of that and he'll be putting up a Google calendar so people can schedule use of it. He's also going to be responsible for receiving the keys back, for receiving all of the, both the pre- and post-trip forms back. One of the things we had a problem with last time with our last van was, you know, keeping it clean, keeping it used, used, keeping it full of gas. And that's one of the things that this procedural document is trying to overcome to make sure that we have strong and long life for this. So it will be the athletic director.
Can I just add to that, though? There is a process that Carl and I have discussed that I would be giving approval before it goes to him for actual scheduling so that I can actually make sure that people who are signing up to use it have done the things they're supposed to do before it goes to Carl.
That's great, Kristy.
The the other thing is, and part of this whole process is people registering in advance, so you don't, you don't decide the day of the thing that you want to take the van out. Your, there's a copy of your driver's license on file, there's a whole process around that. Yeah.
Can I just make a suggestion? And it's totally that, is that instead of just saying we we want to have people who will be using the van with a valid motor vehicle license, could we also offer an inducement to them to get the next hire up with with Berkshire Hills picking up the cost of that? I think it's important, due to this incident that happened, and Paul Gibbons mentioned this when it came out before the school center, anyway, thanks, Steve, about the type of license that you need. And I understand exactly where he's coming from. I would like to see it held out to the people who are going to be using the van, coaches. We know Sean Flynn talked about it with internships, getting kids around became a real problem with that van. Would it be possible for the district to say, we we will allow you to drive with your driver's license? We encourage you and and we will pick up the cost for you to get the next step.
Bill, if you want to make a amendment to the motion.
I, Bill, I think you're making this way more complicated than it needs to be.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with Bill's sentiment, but I think we're proving this document as a legal form.
Okay.
If you want to make this motion afterwards, that the administration's.
This is something that's really simple.
So I have a motion and I have a second, let's vote on this. And the motion is to allow the multi-function school activity bus drivers to have a regular driver's license. So Anne, Jason, Sean. Ron?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Molly?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Bill, do you have another?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that the Berkshire Hills District encourage people who use this van to go ahead and get the next step license, which is, what was it?
Seven-D.
Seven-D and have the district pick up the cost of such a enterprise that people want to do that. We, I just think sometimes it helps you, maybe in an insurance case or something like that.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Steve, I just want to, if people are wondering, the cost is, it was fifty, it might be between fifty and seventy-five dollars per person now.
Thank you, Sharon.
What, what, yeah, what does it entail, what, what were you?
Is it like another permit test?
Is it, Sharon, do you know?
It's a different classification.
It's basically, it's basically a, a, a book test, it's a written test. It's basically, it's basically a, a, a book test, it's a written test.
Yeah, it's not written.
We have no idea what this costs, right?
Somewhere between fifty and seventy-five dollars per person.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I.
Don't know what it costs. I mean, come on.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, a roll call vote, Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Sean.
No.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Molly.
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it passes nine to one. I believe, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, Sharon, could it be as low as fifteen dollars, but it's done yearly?
It could be, when I looked, it was fifty, but.
Yeah. It wa, it wasn't my proposal.
No, I don't.
Can I explain to the committee my intention here?
Yeah, of course.
A couple of years ago, before I left teaching, we had to do a quarry. And we had to go up and get fingerprinted, and teachers had to pay for it, and I can't tell you how people were perturbed by that, that the district didn't pick up that cost.
It was in the contract, by the way, but, okay.
It was just.
You guys.
That's why I'm offering.
Okay, it, it's passed, so it's fine.
Okay.
And, you know, I read this a while ago, like four days ago, and I don't remember, if someone is driving their van, are we checking their driver's license that it's?
Yeah, they can't do it until they register with us as somebody who's gonna.
And the license is on file and everything?
Right, I understand that part.
But making sure it's like, not taking any?
Making, well, also making sure they don't have like 3D DUIs.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think the challenge on that is the, the timeliness of reporting.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, so I could check your license today and you could get a DUI tomorrow, and I won't know about it for a while.
Well, you could have had a DUI in 2016, a DUI in 2018, and you would have your license.
Yes.
You would be, you would have a driver's license.
Well, we may not want that person.
That's, I think that's, that's what you're, you're looking for driver history, not just existence.
Right, now it sounds like Avram Costello, but I'm not, not today in the barn, I'm talking yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. That, that, that would likely appear on a quarry check.
It does appear on a quarry check, other, yeah, yeah, it would, so I guess.
So then it's a superhazardous call at that point.
If anything on your driver's license that shows up on a quarry check, so whoever has that on their quarry check shouldn't be driving the van. And we shouldn't be approving money that we don't know how much it costs to do something.
I already did, Sean. Alright, okay, let's, yeah, Rich is getting antsy, let's move ahead. Um, next is the Massachusetts School Building Authority letter, the infamous letter.
So, we got this letter on April fourteenth, or it was dated April fourteenth, they probably got it a few days later. Um, and unfortunately, the MSBA has not, um, uh, approved our project to move forward. Um, apparently, there were many high need districts, fifty-two, uh, and, and we didn't make the cut. Um, I hope, um, or I'd like to think that we were close to making the cut, uh, but, but there's no list or, or waitlist that's, that's publicly available. Um, the, the one upside on this, and I have to be an optimist in, in the context of my work, um, is that, um, if and when we reapply, um, the turnaround could be as quick as five to six months, because they hope to approve the next round of these in November or December. Um, that would be the, the fastest turnaround, I think, in the history of the MSBA. Uh, so, um, I, again, I'm, I'm frustrated that, uh, that they didn't approve us. I really believe our ducks are in a row, and I've made this case a hundred times to them and you and everybody, but everything to date that we could do to get on the list, uh, I think we've, we've done in the, both the conditions of the building and the, the high level of community support warrant, uh, us moving forward. So, I, I think there, there are two questions, one is, um, um, I'd like to bring to our next meeting, uh, uh, revised or updated SOI, uh, for your, uh, potential approval and, and submittal. So that's part of it, and then at a meeting maybe six months ago, maybe a little longer than that, um, some folks discuss the possibility of a two-track approach, so, uh, doing the SOI again with the MSBA, but also having a, a proposal to, to move forward if, if they chose not to support us again. So, uh, the first part's relatively easy, I'll bring you a, uh, updated, uh, revised SOI that Steve and I have started to work on. Uh, and we submitted, the second one is slightly more, uh, complex and, and uh, either Rich or, or Jason, I think have talked to me the most about it, so one of you might want to frame that.
Oh, you mean, but?
The second track.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, this is, I mean, it was actually, we had a meeting, joint meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Affairs Committee in January of two thousand nineteen, when we started this conversation. And at that point, I was initially pushing for trying to get a, uh, you know, build our own process going. And the sentiment at that point was we were kind of already behind the eight ball for the May two thousand nineteen town meetings, and we were, you know, on the verge of submitting on the SOI anyway, so we said wait, and, you know, obviously wrong decision. But also, then again, in the six months, we had the same meeting, we keep getting in this cycle where, where we wait for the SOI, and then by the time we get notice of our, our, our latest on the SOI, it's too late to get on a track, so we wait for another SOI. And I just can't, I can't go along with that anymore. Um, uh, I applaud Peter's optimism, but, um, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Um, so, um, uh, I may or may not support an SOI next week. Um, uh, but a requirement of my support for that would be that we are moving forward rebuilding our own project, um, and getting ready to start a design phase, um, you know, in the first half of two thousand and twenty-one, and putting the financing in place and doing all that work. I, I don't, I think, I agree, I mean, it's nice that it's, we're promised a quick turnaround in November. Um, but that, that November, December still puts us behind the eight ball. Um, so, um, I am definitively in the, 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 at best, two-track column, I just don't, I don't think we can, and we can say this every time, it's new students show up every, every September, and they keep rolling by, and we're not, we're not doing them justice.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to, if I could, uh, echo what Richard said. Um, I don't like the two-track because it's a young MSBA, so whatever, if, if it's a two-track or it's got anything to do with the MSBA, I'm gonna vote no. I feel we should start now to do this, I'll paraphrase what Rich said the last time this came around with this committee, he said, we're not doing justice to the current students, I think I paraphrased that correct. Um, we're not current, we're not doing justice waiting, and we're gonna wait six months, fine. I think we need to start this summer with informing the finance committees of the three towns. This is what we're gonna do, this regional school district has fiddled and, fiddled and diddled, in the words of Johnny Most, uh, too long, and what Richard said is so true, we're doing the same thing again and again. There's no guarantee in the letter that their timeframe is gonna change, I mean, I know that's what you hear verbally, but I'm not reading that here. Um, I'm reading the same thing we got for the last three years. Um, I'm just at my wit's end with this, I'm voting to, to get rid of the MSBA and tell the towns, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna be our own boss on this. And I like the approach because we can deal with what we want, not what the MSBA wants us to do.
Did just one thing I, I want to flag, if we go the second route, Steve and I might come to you for some additional support, because I don't know that we have the capacity, in addition to all the stuff we're doing to manage, uh, uh, do it your own project, so, so let me just, right, we, we might have to get a, a owner's project manager, designer, or something.
Well, we're gonna have to do that either way.
Either way, right.
Well, you're gonna have to have more help anyways. I, I still believe, uh, I disagree with Bill, I agree with Rich, and I think we have to give it one more shot with the MSBA because dollars and cents, I do think either way, we have to do a project. And if we get turned down this year, we continue and do a project, that, this is the.
We got shovels in the ground this time next year, whether we're bad for the MSBA.
Yeah, I, I think we, and I think, for instance, if we want to over the summer start forming a building committee per MSBA guidelines, so that they say, yes, we have a building committee that meets our guidelines, if they say no, we have a building committee. So we don't have to redo the building committee, because they have very specific guidelines for a building committee. If we want to hire a project manager over the summer, we do that. If the MSBA says yes, the project manager's licensed to do work with the MSBA, great. If they're not, we turn and hire them, so we, we can go on the second track immediately, like it's, it's seamless, as opposed to waiting six more months. So I, I think the two-tier approach is fine, uh, I think I'll lash out with the MSBA, but I'm not willing to go with Bill's approach because of about at least thirty million reasons, that, that will make a huge difference of what we're doing. So I think we have to give it one more shot, and, and hopefully they'll see it our way, but either way.
Say something here really quick, um, we need to do this two-pronged, there's no question about it, we're, 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 I mean, I, I think the MSBA is sending us a clear and loud message. And they have been for two years, three years. Um, and we need to go at this on, on both directions, and we need a project manager, and if we need to hire a project manager, then we need to start getting that in motion. But the longer we sit around and do nothing, the worse it is for everyone. Our high school is successful despite itself. It is not successful for a lot of people. It's successful for the people who are successful. And that building is a disaster. And, and if anybody wants to say otherwise, that's just crazy. This is a building that is, what, sixty, seventy years old? How many people live in a sixty or seventy-year-old building that hasn't been renovated? Hasn't been fixed up? Hasn't had anything done to it? The windows, the windows? Six-year-old windows, you still have those in your house? This is craziness, we need to get this building.
Can I? I just addressed the procedural issue too, I want to keep talking about the whole project, I think. And, and it's up to you, Mr. Sharon, I know we're not voting on anything tonight.
Well, we could.
Well, we could, well, I don't, well, I mean, so clearly, you know, the administration is gonna put together another SOI to be voted on.
Yes.
Which is a singular vote.
Yes.
That, that, the administration will vote, and we're gonna vote on that. Uh, I'd like to have a, 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 a more fleshed out, you know, build on our own proposal, I mean, it could just be like a term sheet or something, but really what we are and vote on that separately. And, and my preference would be first, because if I don't know what that looks like, that's gonna affect my vote on the second day.
What, what I want to see is a single track up to the MSBA decision. And then if the MSBA says yes, this is where we're going, if the MSBA says no, this is where we're going. In other words, we shouldn't be doing two things at the beginning, we can, we can continue, we can continue forming the building committee, we can continue getting a project manager up until the MSBA decision, then they drive it from there, they say yes, we have to follow their terms.
No, no, that's fair, that's, and by the way, their vote is, Sharon will give it to us, it's like a forum vote, we have to take, uh, approve their SOI. Maybe it's, whatever it is, that's separate, but I, I kind of, um, um, well, well, even from your timetable, what go-to loan looks like for six months, I think means different things to different people.
I agree.
Um, I, I, I think we may need a construction project manager type person. I think we are understaffed internally administratively to deal with frankly, either MSBA or building on that. I got my head bitten off after the last vote, but I, I was the one who was trying to push for, and I didn't phrase it right, and I proposed it right, for expanded administrative staff, because I saw the toll that the last project took on other avenues. So, um, that's why I, I, I don't want to vote tonight, I don't want it to be loose, I think we all have different ideas about what go-to loan looks like. Um, um, you know, we have to be prepared, and it, you know, and by the way, Sharon's the one who may need as much help as, as Steve and, and Peter on this, but, you know, what the finance of this will look like. You know, for a design phase of bill of our own, I don't know that we need to go to the towns for an approval, I think we may just be able to do that in our own capital budget for next year, but that's all gotta be fleshed out, and if we're going to the towns for, for debt approval, uh, that's a, that's a bulk of work for Sharon and prep and stuff, we gotta, as Phil says, we gotta communicate to the towns. Those are just some of the bullet points that I would like to see, um, on something that we could vote on.
And you and I have talked about this, one of the things we have to think about is, Sharon, what, when is the two, uh, elementary and middle school debt payments over?
Fiscal twenty-four.
So, so we will, we will not start paying, whether this is approved or not, till after that, so that's a positive, but.
No.
No, it wouldn't start.
No, this is, so we're starting fiscal twenty-three and, or twenty-two.
You don't pay the projects.
I know, so if we, if we approve, if, if, if the next time, suppose we take a big note.
Yeah.
That we approve at the next year's town meetings?
Yes.
We'll draw that down in twenty-three and start paying back to twenty-four, just as those come on.
Right, and my concern is, is that we want to make sure we have good communication with the towns, so that, you know, a lot of times the towns will say, oh, good, those are done with, we'll spend the money somewhere else, no, we don't want you to spend the somewhere else, one's money with us.
I'm suggesting we talk to the finance committees right away.
Yeah.
And not even vote for MSBA, go right to the finance.
No.
This is what we're discu, this is what the district is planning on doing, we're letting it on now. We start our budget process in August, maybe that will get the towns to say, wow.
Well, you go to the finance committees with this right now, you're gonna have towns that are gonna pull out of the district.
I, I agree with Sean, go ahead. No, I, I just would like the committee to, to understand the depth of the political implications around this, and, uh, it would be much easier to go back to the MSBA with a unanimous vote supporting it. Um, if they were, like, we'd like to be part of this, please help us do it, than to go with a, a split vote or multiple contradictory votes. Uh, though I support the notion is if they deny it again, then we figure out a way to do it on our own. So I just, I'd like you all to think about, um, how you present your thinking, because it'll get to the MSBA, and, and I think it should be coherent and, and deliberate.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's, it's, it's a very logical body.
Going along, how are towns gonna pull out, I don't understand.
Well, Bill, if we go it alone, it's a huge financial impact.
I, I understand that.
Well, I mean.
Katie Verk, one of the candidates for selecting, has brought it up already.
Bill, can you walk down the street and chew gum? Yes, we can. We can do this at the same time.
I guess, that's, I mean, is there a way that it doesn't have to be mutually exclusive, where we can support it as a committee, but still be marching down in alternative scenario?
Yeah, and I think that's what Peter's suggesting, I mean, what he's not suggesting is that we take a six to four vote to submit an SOI, because that will be the death knell of the SOI.
Well, we've had unanimous votes denied, we've had split votes denied.
I don't know if we've had split votes denied.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, one of the concerns the MSBA continues to have is they have a very long memory in that fact that we, we had two no votes. So they want to see.
I don't think this elephant's ever gonna forget, I think that's the problem.
Well, you could be right, I'm not denying that, but I think we owe it one more shot.
It is certainly not a mystery, when, when I offer you money twice and you don't take it twice, why am I gonna offer you a third time?
I agree with you, Steve.
So, so let's have the administration.
But, but the circumstances have changed so much, which is what I keep trying to explain, right?
Well, you know, my, my comment there is, we heard that at the next steps committee two years ago, there's people on the next step. Well, you know, my, my comment there is, we heard that at the next steps committee two years ago, was people on the next steps who I've kept in contact with say, why don't we, I think we could need, we could use the next steps in this communication issue with the towns. We went to every town finance committee and explained to them, and they all seemed to understand the problem. Now I know we're starting to talk about the financially actual finances of it, but it's not like they don't know that this is happening. And, and one of the candidates for selectmen in Great Barrington brought it up at a meeting about stabilization fund. She said, you know, we're gonna need money for our high school. So it's not like this is-
Bill, she didn't say we're gonna need money for a high school to go it alone. She said we're gonna need money for a high school, which is a true statement.
Yeah, that's my point. I know.
Well, let me, uh, next meeting's on the twentieth.
Yes.
Peter is definitely gonna have an SOI for us to vote on, one way or the other. Is that a plan?
Yeah.
Is there an appetite for a joint finance buildings and grounds committee meeting next week sometime to just bat around ideas on this?
Yes, I mean, we were gonna meet anyway to discuss multiple tracks and reassess, you know.
Yeah.
So this would fall right into that.
Okay.
Possibility, yeah.
So you can't, Monday, we, we can't even get it posted for Monday. Tuesday's election day, so, um, I'm working the precinct beat. Probably Thursday's the best day to do this, if we're gonna do it. I could do it Thursday.
I, I don't mind doing, could you, we can, it's Friday, bad for people, like, earlier, like, five?
Yeah, that's one case, maybe we have.
Yeah, I, I couldn't do it on the fourteenth. I have someone-
I, we could, what, let's, let's, let's tend to do that on the, on the thirteenth, and Peter can confirm with everybody tomorrow.
Yeah, five.
That's, that's Thursday, Thursday at five.
Five, Thursday at five. That's fine with me. And if you wanna do it completely by Zoom, to make it easier for people getting out of work, and that's fine. If you wanna do it in person, that's fine.
I mean, we can leave it. You know what, hey, if we're doing, if we're doing it Zoom, do you wanna do it at, like, lunchtime?
I don't get a lunchtime.
Yeah, I don't do that either.
All right, sorry.
Five o'clock for Zoom, and then we'll be all set.
That's fine.
But I didn't, I didn't mean that proposal to, to kill the conversation tonight.
No, that's good. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak?
Can I just ask one question? Just to check one back before I get to the audience. So, um, the MSB said they had seventy-one SOIs from fifty-two school districts. Do we know how many they gave out out of those seventy-one? Is there, did they publish, like, did they give out thirty of them? Did they give out?
Yeah, they did. They published them last year. They, they gave out the school-
I think, I think they, I think since January, they've done six. I didn't think they did any before that. But I just try to follow the meeting minutes, which are hard to follow.
Yeah, I was looking, I mean, to me, it looked like it was like ten or not eleven, like, not a lot. I'm wondering if I'm missing more, if they, if there was multiple rounds given, or, or is that?
It's very hard to, to decipher. They do do something like annual report long after the fact. Like, we'll get a report for what they did in two thousand nineteen. So very opaque.
Dan, Dan, go ahead. Dan Bailey.
Thanks, Steve. I, I obviously have been listening to this for eight years now, um, on both sides of this whole debate. And I, I, every time I hear that there's a vote coming up, I, especially the last two, I've just been like, yeah, whatever, it's not gonna happen. And I've been in contact with both Rich and Jason with my, my revised feelings on this. And, Rich, I really do wanna, um, commend you for what you said tonight, and, and going about this in, in a way that's, um, sensible. Moving forward towards actually getting a project done, because it is all about the kids. It really is. It's about the students. As anybody that knows me, as far as municipal finances goes, knows that I don't really wanna spend a penny on anything. But there comes a time when you have to. You really absolutely have to do something. So moving forward, I think it's, it's imperative that we, we can't sit there and say, well, this could happen, this could happen, this could happen. We, we have to at some point, and when I say we, I mean the whole community, have to start moving towards getting a project done. With that said, I don't think we should completely blow up the SOI. So I, I like the idea of what, um, Steve was talking about, and, and, and Peter were also talking about too, and being very careful with that. And, and continuing down the path that you're, that would satisfy both requirements. You know, get, get a project manager on board, do whatever you might need to, if there's some sort of building committee that you need to for the MSBA, that, and if it, if that doesn't go through in six months, then you can, then you can just dovetail into doing it on your own. So I, I, I'm very pleased by the discussion tonight. So I commend all of you, and I know it's never an easy decision, but I just, awesome, and I'm not gonna throw a number out there, because I don't think it's fair to. But being in the construction industry and seeing what this pandemic has done to just building materials. In two thousand and thirteen, that project was somewhere around fifty-six million dollars. You can, you can probably understand that building materials or building materials alone have doubled in the last year. You can imagine what the price of this project may be now. So that's, if, if you're comparing apples to apples, obviously. But the interesting thing about that is if, if we were to be able to do this on our own, we might be able to do it differently, where we don't have so many requirements that the MSBA, MSBA has to. So, anyway. Those are just my thoughts. I do, um, I do appreciate you guys keeping this moving forward. But at some point, I think it's time to, you know, pardon my French, but crap, or get off the pot, and, and it's time. We gotta keep going here.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Anyone else before we move ahead? Subcommittee reports.
Steve, so I, I looked at the MSBA site. They invited fifteen people to eligibility, period, three to feasibility study, four to schematic design, three to scope and budget, and then a bunch to audit, but that's on the, on the backend of a project. So the, the pool that, that I think we would have been in would have been eligibility, and that would have been fifteen. So out of seventy, seventy-one.
Listen, twenty percent is in my mouth. So.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Policy Subcommittee Committee has not met. Buildings and grounds-
Have not met.
We will. Superintendent's evaluation, okay? Technology has not met. Finance has not met. And District Consolidation, Sharon's on that. Personnel reports, Peter.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Uh, it's, it's very much hiring season. And, uh, some really good news about some hires. You met, hey, Brett Sol earlier. Uh, Jamie Downers joining us as a biology teacher at the high school. Madeline Albano is, uh, will be an elementary school teacher at the middle school. And Cara Peckham will be an elementary school, uh, uh, elementary school teacher. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Madeline and Carke McLean will both be elementary school teachers at the elementary school. Vonda Amstead is our accounts payable technician. I mentioned Ayanna Smith is the district wellness coordinator. Um, and then Ann Donello is moving from two half-time positions at Monument to a full-time special education position. So congratulations to her. And Keith Wright, a middle school science teacher, is moving, uh, to the high school to be a science teacher. So that, that is, uh, also exciting. The, the rest of it are, are leaves and, stipended roles, after-school, extended day, coaching, um, things like that.
Peter, is it your intention to replace any of the social studies department?
Yes. Uh, and Kristy, are you, you wanna talk to that a little bit? Storm?
Yes, Bill, I'm here. Uh, thank you for the question. Um, yes, last year, Anne was in the social studies department point eight. This year, she was a full-time teacher, but splitting halftime social studies and halftime in special education. Um, after a discussion with Peter and the school committee's approval of the plan we proposed for ninth grade, um, we have moved to, um, post the social studies position as a one-point-oh full-time position. Um, so that we'll have the ability to make the class sizes, uh, small in ninth grade and provide the team the time they need to do the work, um, to, you know, make the plan that we proposed successful.
Anyone else?
Well, I just, I, I'm happy to see, as far as some of these new teacher hires, um, some younger teachers who I think, you know, really bring that important aspect and, you know, vitality to, to the role. And, um, also obviously from a finance standpoint, um, you know, going forward, that, that's the place where we can save money. So I think, you know, two points, two pluses for hiring, you know, younger, uh, teachers. I'm glad to see that going forward after, uh, you know, looking at the, the finance numbers going forward. So good job.
Thanks. Yes, as we get to new business, can I bring up the recent car accident?
Yes, of course.
So we're, we're going to all this, this is new business right now. It's a new business. Yeah, so sadly, the other day, we had a, a, another car accident outside of, uh, Monument. Students driving, exiting south onto, uh, Route seven, going toward, uh, Great Barrington. This, uh, happened, I mean, it happens occasionally. Often they're, they're minor accidents. Thankfully, everybody's okay. They were transported to Fairview and checked out. The, the last time this happened, I think in a significant way, um, was almost five years to the date. And at that point, um, and, and several times, we, we've reached out and met with the MSBA, previously with Chief Walsh, even with now the current chief, Paul Storty, uh, with Smitty. Steve and I, Steve Bannon and I, and Steve Soul, um, we met several times with them and the previous, uh, town manager. And, um, the, the response that they have shared is the, the, um, uh, data doesn't, the, 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 the large community request has been to put in a second light, right, to sort of summarize things. And, and the response has been that the data doesn't justify a second light. And, and in some cases, a second light actually can create a more dangerous situation. I'm not gonna argue the merits of any of those arguments. A couple of nice things that, that have happened since then is since the, the two thousand sixteen accident, the flashing lights with the speed indicators were installed on both sides of, of Route seven, indicating thirty-five mile an hour instead of fifty mile. And, and Route seven is marked in large white lettering that's a school area, right? So that's the upside. Great Barrington did that, uh, with the advice and support of the, of the DOT. What I imagine will happen, because there was another accident, is, uh, people will share and voice their concerns about this, uh, and will, will likely have another meeting with the, the DOT, or several more meetings. Their recommended solution is that we build a, um, internal driveway that lands somewhere on Monument Valley Road, and then all traffic exits there at that light at different times that had been costed out, uh, and-
But they approved the square button, and they approved the speed limit, so.
Yeah.
They didn't think the curve code was appropriate? They shouldn't have approved it fifty years ago?
I cannot speak to that.
I know. I'm not, I'm not-
What's my frustration with the MSB?
Well, and probably fifty years ago, people were driving slower, and there were fewer cars. Right, so-
One of the things is, you know, driver experience, and I watched, there was another lane. And if there's a car, if you're waiting to go south, and there's a car coming in the lane that you're gonna take to get or go into the high school, and there's a car just behind.
Agreed.
These kids look at the car, and as it starts to turn, they're not looking at the other lane. They don't, I hate to tell you. They don't wait until that car in the lane going into the high school completes that turn, because then they can see. And that's the problem. And it, maybe it's something that, um, can be structurally, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and just, and we'll have this conversation again. Apparently, at one point, there were-
Driving instructor.
Right. There, there were, there was only one lane. And, and if somebody was turning, all the cars behind had to wait until the person turned right. But then there wasn't that sort of blind spot where there's a car behind the other car, or, yeah, I mean, behind it, but not, not to its rear, but on the other side of it. So there, I remember having a discussion about should, should there not be two lanes, a, uh, northbound lane and a turning lane? Would it actually be safer to just have, uh, a northbound lane and no turning lane? There, there are all sorts of things have come up. Are the signs too high for shorter students in low cars? So, uh, they can't see that well over the triangle sign when they're turning.
Can I just say something though, because I feel like any of these are all good ideas, and that is, this is not a Berkshire Hills Regional School District problem. It is certainly not a Peter Dillon problem. It is a town of Great Barrington problem and a Mass Highway problem. They're, we're in charge of educating these kids, and that's hard enough. They're in charge of keeping our roads safe.
So, so the, the one-
That's where, that's where all this energy should be. And I don't wanna disinform the public
No, no.
by having a, which is a conversation, but this is-
You did a little bit, because Mass Highway trumps everyone else. I mean, they did on Main Street, they do, they do on this. So the town of Great Barrington can write them a letter and ask, which they've done. The town manager can meet with the DOT. The DOT sends that letter out, that says, it's not a dangerous intersection, and we're not putting a light up. So it's really a DOT problem, that so far, we haven't been able to crack, uh, in as long as I've been on this. And we've somehow got the light at the middle school and elementary school, which was unplanned when that building was built. And we got that politically, but the second one, the DOT has not been, uh, very willing to talk about. Well, they're willing to talk, it's not what we're dealing with. So, so you're right, yeah. So I, I'm happy. If you wanna send me emails, send them to me. I'll forward them to the appropriate people.
I think it's better to encourage people to, to- I mean, I'm telling you this, every time there's a minor accident at an intersection in Lennox, Mass DOT fixes the problem right away. I commute, I've been commuting from Great Barrington to Fitzville now for fifteen, twenty years. And, and I can count on my hand, three intersections that have been fixed, because of dangerousness, and I can't count, I don't know one of their factors. So there is politics at work here, and I think we, the people have gotta rise up and talk to the people who make the decision.
And what you don't wanna led to is, is what started this whole thing in nineteen eighty-three, when we had a double fatality after a football game. Right on that spot. That's why the whole change occurred. Not the flashing lights, but that whole idea, that whole island thing was a result of a double fatality with many cars coming out. And it was in, I believe, nineteen eighty-three. And they changed, and I agree with Rich. That's, it, it's sad to say, but that's the only way that something gets done, is if you have, um, a thing like that happened at Lennox, that most recent one. You know, that's, and, and I don't understand their thinking.
But, but I think the whole thought here, and Rich is absolutely right. People are gonna get upset again, which they have a right to. Right to email the DOT. DOT has the ultimate authority here. And they are a political body, and they should listen to their constituents. They're hired, they're not elected, but-
I know we've done it before. I would like this, to prepare another letter for the next meeting for us, to send another letter to the DOT. I don't, it can't hurt.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I would also reach out to our other elected officials, our state rep and our state senator.
They should be on the letter.
Yeah, we've done it before, and why not do it again? We, we've met with them, what, in the last two years, we've met with them, I think. I can't remember when it was, but there was a meeting.
No. So that, so again, I'd like, and, and while we support people in working with the DOT to change this, the, uh, I'm, I'm happy that nobody was hurt. And, and please, 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 like, let's work with our young people to be extra careful and patient, and it's better to be a couple of minutes late and get out of that intersection safely than to, to try to squeeze in between oncoming traffic and get in a bad accident.
Absolutely. Any other new or old business?
Does that flashing light flash all the time, school is in session, or is it only in the hours that buses are coming and going?
The, the speedlights?
Yeah.
It, it's, it's meant to be in the hours that buses are coming and going. And on my giant memo that I'll share with you next meeting or June or whenever you want to read it. I will build in a thing that if we have a early release on Wednesdays, that the timing of the flashing light corresponds on Wednesdays.
This happens this week, so that flashing light wouldn't have been on?
It, it was an early release then.
No, it was not.
Well, early release kind of spans an hour and a half right now.
But still, I don't think it would have caught this one.
No, I thought it was.
Should be all the time because kids come and go all the time. Parents come and go.
I think it is because I've driven by there at odd hours and it still's going off.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just said we shouldn't get it. I think they should put a regular stoplight there. There's only a stoplight in the morning and the afternoon and it's just a blinking light the rest of the time.
We did ask for that.
That, I think, I mean.
Any other?
And that's not that expensive, you know?
Uh, I don't think the expense was a problem.
No, yeah, then if, yeah, that's, and I'm, it's, this is not expensive. Mass Highway doesn't want to slow traffic there.
Yeah.
That's it. It's a principle thing.
You're absolutely right. But, but it, it's interesting in the context of like the, the flooded plain, right? So the, the lack of willingness to slow traffic down deliberately, but, but four hundred yards down the road. Uh, there's six inches of water that we're driving through.
Yeah.
Is, is there any other new or old business? Any public?
Oh, I had, well, I stuck with briefly before. I was going to make a motion, but I think we should consider having our summer meeting starting next time at one of the outdoor classrooms at the high school.
It's my prerogative and I'd be glad to take you up on that.
Okay.
Yes. Any public comment? Hearing, seeing no public comment. Go ahead.
Um, hi guys. It's Steve Boyd. I live in West Dockridge, um, on Glendale Road. I'm, I've literally just logged in, so I apologize. I'm getting in late to the meeting and I may be way out of order here. But have you talked about the vote with regard to reapplying for school funding?
Yes, we have.
Okay. I don't know how it turned out, but my public comment would be, I hope that you.
Well, actually, we're going to, we're going to vote at our next meeting.
Yes, it's really the, the, we have a discussion, but it's got, we're going to vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay, I'll hold comments till then. I hope you do it.
To our next meeting and we'll be glad to, to listen.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all. Not at all. Anyone else? Then by unanimous consent, merger.